Okay, welcome. I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of meeting with our attorneys to update us on a settlement proposal. No action be taken and we will be returning to open session after that. Krista, thank you. Carrie, second. Let me just write that down. Krista, Carrie, and it is 5:32. All those in favor? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. We'll be back shortly. Welcome. You're returning from executive session. Need a motion placed to open.
Motion, Carrie.
And Krista, thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes. We are 7-0. Thank you. Okay, and now I'd like to ask, we have a suit up today. Yes, thank you. To listen to the pledge.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you have any useful remarks? Please start with you, Josh.
Thank you. Good evening. I have two announcements this evening. First has to do with graduation measures in New York State. So the State Education Department will be establishing a blue ribbon commission tasked with reviewing New York State requirements for high school diploma. So the commissioner has put out three goals. The first is to reconsider the current diploma requirements. The second is to ensure that all students have access to multiple graduation measures. And the third is to ensure a transition plan timeline that allows for school districts to be able to implement these changes. So this will be a three-phase process, beginning with information gathering, which is what this commission is in now. All three phases are expected to conclude in the fall of 2021, with the blue ribbon committee presenting your recommendations to the Board of Regents at that time. So I'll certainly keep the board updated with any relevant information. And my final announcement this evening has to do with a curriculum conversation that we are hosting tomorrow night at JFK Elementary School from 6:30 to 7:30. This is pertaining to changes to the K-5 report card. So the representative group has been involved in a multi-year process designed to bring incremental changes to the reporting process with the goals of greater clarity, alignment, consistency, and accuracy. So we hope to see parents of K-5 students there tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Mr. Carrington?
Sure. Good evening. So I'd like to share that the HR department has been updating and growing our webpage to include important information on the five core areas of the department, which include recruiting and staffing, compensation benefits, onboarding and professional development, healthy labor employee relations, and organizational development performance management. It's been our goal to provide employees with better access to information along with greater accessibility to relevant documents through our web presence. And as such, some recent updates have been made with this in mind. Special thanks to Donna McAlpin, our school web and communication specialist, along with Jim Tralor, our director of technology, for their help and support of this work. I also wanted to share that I had the pleasure of attending the three-day conference of New York State, the New York State Association of School Personnel Administrators in Cooperstown last week. The conference was well-attended by directors and assistant superintendents of HR and personnel throughout New York. Aside from the valuable opportunity to network and collaborate with professionals throughout the state, the conference included important legal updates from attorneys throughout the state, information on changes to certification requirements in certain areas from SED and the Office of Teaching Initiatives, and information on the Family Medical Leave Act from the Wage and Hour Division of the U.S. Department of Labor. I do want to thank Dr. Banlow, along with my administrative team and certainly the board for supporting this learning opportunity and helping with transition.
Thank you. Mr. Carrington?
Good evening. On October 17th, Bear's Backpack went out soliciting volunteers for our budget advisory committee and developing the 2021 school budget. We have our Budget 101 Workshop Series. I just want to remind everyone of the dates are November 19th, all Tuesdays. November 19th, December 3rd, and December 17th, we're going to be reviewing some of the challenges and opportunities that we face in terms of budget development. Again, if anyone is interested in serving on our advisory committee, please send a letter of interest to the district clerk and refer back to the October 17th Bear's Backpack. And that concludes my comments.
And I'll just add, every G-S captain, every system. And I think you've gone to Dr. Banlow.
Yes, thank you. I have one very, very important announcement for tonight. Last week, Governor Cuomo designated the week of school board recognition. And in honor of all of you this evening, we have some special guests who can obviously get a shout in the audience. And several of us attended this past week the New York State School Board Association Convention. It was the 100th centennial year of the convention. And interestingly enough, there was a gentleman there who had served on schoolwork for 57 years. And he was there, he started in 1962, and he was awarding a wonderful award. The work that each of you do is not just tonight. It is committees, it is work behind the scenes that many people don't really realize. So in honor of you tonight, we have a very special presentation. But my comments are thank you on behalf of the school community, the entire Brewster community, Southeast community, for your hard work and diligence. So thank you.
And I'm actually going to save my remarks for board comments at the end because I just want to kind of recap the convention and how the roads went and just a little bit about the seminars that were attended. Someone got to the end and not bore us all with that now. So move on then to our student representatives.
Good evening. So here's what's happening at the high school. The Fall Drama, Peter and the Star Catcher, will open at 7:00 p.m. on November 7th, and will show at 7:00 p.m. on November 8th, and at 2:00 and 7:00 on November 9th. Last week, Dr. Dewey presented for parents and students about addiction on the adolescent brain, touched on technology, phones, video games, drugs, and vaping. The fall season of sports is over, sports awards is on the sixth. This season, our football team advanced and completed the season with Section 1 Class A quartile. The girls' field hockey advanced and completed the season with a sectional outgraffled game. And the girls' soccer team played in a sectional opening round game. Last week, NJR2C completed their successful annual inspection, which included demonstrations. And on November 7th, will be the grand opening of the Brewster High School Coffee Shop.
Okay. We now move on to presentations, recognition, and discussion. And first up, we have Penn and Northern Westchester Bosse's CTE Student of Distinction, Ryan Gagliardo, I did not say that correctly, and Principal Jim Belucci. They presented. Welcome.
Come on up.
You can clap.
Come on up here, Ryan. Well, I'd like to thank Superintendent Banlow and the Brewster School Board for having us come up here. Bosse's come up here to recognize our students, Ryan Gagliardo, a student at Brewster, my school, and also at the Tech Center. And I'd also like to recognize Merrick K. Nelson from the Bosse's Board of Education and Assistant Superintendent John McCarthy and Dr. Lynn Allen are here also to support us. Thanks, John. Lynn, Lynn is somewhere.
Yeah, right here.
Okay. You're blessed. Thanks for coming up. So I have the privilege and honor of being the principal of the Tech Center, and it is truly one of the greatest jobs in the world. I love it. The students, it's a fundamental truth, they're all there because they want to be there, they chose to be there. And Ryan stood out amongst over probably 1,100 students that come through each day. We recognize one a month, 10 a year. So if you're decent, good in math, he is the top 110, 1% of students in a thousand. So Ryan is in our Urban Forestry Program, which is essentially a program that does all sorts of outdoor instructions, heavy equipment, tree work, anything outside. So it's a program where these, the students are operating excavators, backhoes, they're climbing trees, I mean, they're doing a real-time, real-life learning safety. There's a great press release that Mr. Madden, his instructor, wasn't able to make it tonight, was interviewed about Ryan, and I'll just read it briefly. Ryan Gagliardo is the most skilled operator we have, said in this matter, Urban Forestry teacher at the Center Career and Technical Education Program. And this is quite a compliment in a field that requires incredible skill, technical abilities, hard work, and determination. Ryan is amazing, Matten said. He is constantly learning new skills and has an incredible passion for the program. Not only is Ryan a rare talent in the field, he's also passionate about helping others. He assists his fellow classmates all the time, Matten said. He is such a selfless, generous person. Of utmost importance in urban forestry field, and believe me, this is near Geir White Hart, in this field where heavy equipment is constantly employed and safety is everything, Ryan is well-versed in all of it. Because he has such a vast knowledge of the equipment and how it works, he is also really attuned to the importance of safe operations, said Mr. Madden. The choice to nominate Ryan as student of distinction was an obvious one. He is literally the best in this field in this class, which Matten said. So again, top 1%, I go down there all the time, and he's got a passion, all the students have a passion for it, they showed it, they love doing it, and he comes in every day and he goes full four, all the way looking out for his fellow students. He's currently working, when he graduates, he is employed and even continue working. So congratulations to Ryan.
I would like that Merrick K., if you could come up and read the proclamation and Superintendent Banlow would just walk.
This is the Medal of Honor. If you have younger siblings, you're killing the curve for them.
The Penn and Northern Westchester Bosse Student of Distinction, September 2019, is awarded to Ryan Gagliardo in recognition for your outstanding leadership, skills, academic progress, and community spirit, signed by the superintendent and the advisor of the school.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay. We now move on to our Bear's Classic Cross Country Recognition. Mr. Carrington? Welcome.
Want to bring a guy? Come on, bring everybody up.
Come on up there. For the reason I'm so proud of. So on Saturday, talk about the big event here on Saturday, October 5th. Come on, don't be shy. There's some great representatives of Brewster. All right, cool. So 42 years ago, a social studies teacher named Phil Gallagher, who was also our cross-country, also our cross-country coach, started the Bear Classic. And Coach Keilia, who was a law coach, Chris Coe, the brains up behind, one of the largest events in our athletic department. So we've got some fast facts here. This is the largest event because we have 1,500 athletes, they're runners from four to six schools, through grade seven to 12, they're races pretty much all day, and there are definitely 11 races going on. So like I said, the largest event, it's larger than a football game because of just the sheer amount of people that come around. It has some different, the both events have different concerns, but this is something that is a true representation of our community, the collaboration and working together. We certainly couldn't do without a lot of people that we're going to talk about in the next slide. So we have parent volunteers for concessions, setting up the course, race marshals, helping with timing, making sure student athletes are okay, maintaining the course, setting it up the day before, taking it down, at the end of the event, cleaning up. It's been complimented by grounds as one of the most thorough groups as far as using the facility, cleaning it up after the fact. You know, there's several with them out there. That's Mr. Gallagher here, he retired several years ago. Actually had him as a teacher. That's how long I've been around. All right. So we have school groups, it's a group, National, the ROTC, the National Junior Honor Society, they're handing out water at the end of the race. Former parents every year volunteer to help out with this event, they're donating water, different caution tape, different things. Also, different communities eat people. Last year when we did construction and we changed the event, it's really become an entire campus event. It was usually on this side of the street. Now we started behind a high school, the Pudne County Sheriff's Department stopped the traffic, they put a road sign up on Fox Town Road, the EMT, the Brewster Fire Department also come. So that's a great thing. This year, last year, a big concern was parking for buses. So this year, to pass out these chip in Recreation Department, park the buses at Volunteer Park. So that was a great thing for the town to help out with, and it really went off without a hitch. So these are some examples of our some runners and their exploits and, you know, tremendous achievements. And Coach Keilia is going to spend a few minutes talking about some of the great accomplishments, and both of them are proud of that, I'm sure.
All right, thanks, Coach Barato. Before I start, I want to announce all the athletes that are here, so just raise your right hand to the crowd. Senior Marissa Crowley, Junior Alex Droga, Junior Gabrielle Santalas, Freshman Michaela Goldberg, Junior Sarah Luby, Junior Sophia Joga, Sophomore Fiona Dodd, right behind me here, Junior Michael Cardona, Junior Anthony Ayala, Freshman Patrick Ford, Senior Elsa Neubauer, Senior Jack Canagrosi, Junior Ryan Neubauer, Sophomore Jake Rovialo, Junior Finn Ratajack, and Freshman Bryce DeCarlo.
I remember racing back in Brewster at the Bear Classic in the mid-'90s, and, you know, even back then, we had challenges with construction and course changes. And, you know, despite the challenges we faced, hurricanes over the years and, you know, big-time construction projects, we've always seemed to have the meet. So this is my 18th year as coach and meet director, and it was a tremendous event, as it seems to be every year. Again, we had about 1,500 athletes that were at it, from 46 teams from all over the place. And it was a great opportunity for these athletes to shine, they did really well in that event as well. So it was that weekend, the biggest meet in New York State on October 5th. It was the biggest meet in all of New York State, and we're proud of that. And like Coach Barato said, the amount of people who helped are sitting here with us today and some that aren't with us today, and we couldn't have done it without them. So thank you for that. So also, our boys, which are, they're over here somewhere. Yeah, they're behind me. They were the 2019 league champions, which is a great accomplishment. They beat John Jay Cross River, Somers, Yorktown, and Byron Hills to win the League Two Championships, and which is kind of unprecedented for a league championship. Our athletes took the first, second, and third place individual positions in that meet. So Finn Ratajack, Finn, raise your hand, he was the overall league champion, followed mostly by our freshman Patrick Ford in second. And Elsa Neubauer back there was third. So along with them three, we had two other athletes who earned All League, I'm sorry, three other athletes who earned All League, Jack Canagrosi, Anthony Ayala, and David Aladi, who's not here tonight, also earned All League. So six of our seven varsity athletes earned All League, which is a great accomplishment. Our girls' team were runner-up at the league championships. We had four girls make the All League team. Our top runner of the day was Elsa Neubauer, who finished fourth place overall. Marissa Crowley was fifth place overall. And also earning All League was Michaela Goldberg and Sarah Luby. Our season's actually not over yet, we have one more meet. Our sectional championships is next Saturday, November 9th at Bowden Park, and that is, that meet determines which team is section champs and which athletes go to the state championships, which take place Saturday, November 16th, all the way up in SUNY Plattsburgh. So hopefully it's not snowing, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry. Excuse me. Sorry, sorry. Okay. Dr. Banlow, PTA principals.
So at this time, I'd like to ask some very important people, some of my building principals and some of their students, and I have Mrs. Hernandez, please come up, Wells Community Schools, Principal, and also Ms. Maggie Andrelli, our Principal of CB Star, and also Dr. Brian Zamberlin, our Principal at JFK. I think they have some students here that they want to honor. So we'd like, I'd like to let the principals say a few words that they like and honor our board.
On behalf of the Wells community and Principal Clark, I'd like to extend our gratitude to our board. You spend a substantial amount of your time doing the work around making sure our students get the best education possible. We really appreciate you for that. Mrs. Mecifam, Mr. Niles, Mrs. Ferrari, Mr. Heinz, Mr. Brezner, and Mr. Seaver. We thank you. I'd like, I'd like Mr. Salaman to join me, Victor Medera, Kira Goulash, Eva Lisa Rochel, come on up. And I want them to take the mic because the work that they've been doing really captures the definition of community, and it starts with the board, right, and then it triples down with us and the division, commission of our district. So Mr. Salaman's class has been doing really important work. I'm going to grab it while you guys discuss it.
My name is Victor Medera. My name is Kira Goulash. So in our class, we have a class model teacher, me, EB, and a couple other students who help in Mr. Salaman's class. And for the past two weeks, we've been doing a pumpkin project where we painted pumpkins blue for allergies and pink for breast cancer awareness, and all donations are going to the Zachary Schwartz. So we took time to make these pumpkins, this is for all four, and the three, for kids with food allergies, as well as kids for raising breast cancer awareness. And we just wanted to help our community because in a way, we've had times where we've had hard times, but we want to help our community and make it a better place, and we want to thank you all for providing us with an education in a place where we can be ourselves and express things that occur.
I think it's almost there. We've done it the past few years, and unfortunately, the past two years, the charities that we've chosen haven't been on the best of terms, but the cause is still good, I guess.
On behalf of the board, thank you so much.
And then can I just also ask, I'm not sure if anyone here knows, but since you mentioned the proceeds are going to the Zachary Schwartz Scholarship, and for kind of the record, if people want to also donate, where would that feed to, or do we have information, or we can post it online?
The Wells office?
The Wells office.
I'm not sure you're still going to get a pumpkin.
Yeah, I want to thank our students, and it's so tough where there's a loss of community. And, but this is part of being a community, coming together during difficult times and giving back and helping those that have suffered the loss. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. If you're a board member, bring your pumpkin. Bring your pumpkin over. Great job. Great job. Fantastic. Kids, you say there's a doubt. Here's a pumpkin. Thank you.
That's a really hard act to follow.
So on behalf of CB Star and Mr. Allen, I want to extend our thank you to all of you for encouraging and supporting and making possible so much of what we do at CB Star. We have a lot of great things to share, just a little bit for tonight. And I think just to echo what Mr. Madden was saying, guys, at CB Star, it's really been one of our focal points so far this year is building community and being a part of this great thing.
Thank you.
And we went thematically with the holiday season. So we have for you just a little sweet treat, since we are all about the candy at CB Star. From our heart to yours, please, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Doc, you're not giving my best.
They're slightly personal, so. How are you?
Thank you. Saying thank you to the board. Why am I always following? For all you do, on behalf of our district, the time you devote to our community, many times, these are thankless jobs. And by the nature of what you do, you get a lot of heat sometimes, and sometimes you're in the middle of things. So what we did for you at JFK is we put together for you a box of reflection, so that at every executive session that you have throughout the year, you can take one class out at a time and just be reminded about what we do day in and day out as a community to support our children, from the youngest throughout high school. And by the time you get to the end of the year, we do have some rocks in there for you, so, but we wanted you to go through these booklets created from the classes, that, you know, at each board meeting, just pop out of class, take a look at them to start out the meeting, and maybe get back to some of that grounding that we lack sometimes, and we jump right into things. So we have a box of reflection for you throughout the school year, so please, you know, tuck it away somewhere where you can grab it, and.
We'll take it back to our information together.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Saloman. Thank you.
So did I, did I mention we have an incredible district one PTA here also? So this time, I'd like to ask our PTA to come up that they would like to also honor the Board of Education.
Yes, the classes is, but the doctor is.
Good evening, everybody. I'd just like to thank, on behalf of the PTAs in the district, for everything that you do. I know it's a very thankless job, we appreciate all the hours you spend here, and just everything you do for the students in the community and for the community in general. In years past, the PTA has given you gifts. Through a few years now, we've been actually donating things in your need to local organizations. I believe one year, we did the National Hurricane Fund. Last year, we did Pudne CAP. This year, we chose another local organization called Second Chance Foods. They're not really a food pantry, they're a nonprofit food rescue organization that teaches about raising awareness about food waste and. teaches about raising awareness about food waste and insecurity. They collect food from farms, grocery stores, and restaurants, and they also prepare meals. They distribute foods to community outreach programs such as food pantries. So, we, the PTAs in the district, are making a donation of $400 in your name to Second Chance Foods this year.
Thank you. Thank you, that's so generous. On our last presentation, to the license, Jennifer Cassidy, she's a trustee of the Southeast Museum, and she has a presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here with my daughter Ellen Cassidy, who's a Brewster High School student. I think we just pulled that up on display. I'm reading a letter on behalf of the trustees of the Southeast Museum. I'm also a member of the PTA, was inspired when they talked about the school board recognition week. Very good to see. On behalf of the trustees of the Southeast Museum, I would like to thank you for overseeing the education of children within Brewster Central School District. During school board recognition week, and always, you are commended for helping Brewster's youth become tomorrow's successful leaders. As a school board member, you take your place in our distinguished local history, following in the footsteps of so many other great men and women who have helped create the educational vision for today's Brewster. The Southeast Museum is honored to recall the early days of one-room schoolhouses at Brewster Station, Southeast Center, Milltown, Tilly Foster, Sodom, and Doinsburg, just to meet with you. These early schools bear witness to today's successful centralized school system. So please continue to strive for success, progress, and successful learning for all, because you are history. The school board members are gonna be presented with this reproduction, and just a quick history lesson, because we are in schools, of course. This is an illustration created for FW Gear's 1867 Atlas of New York in the vicinity. And a lot of people don't pay attention to the fine print, and unfortunately, it's edited out of this. The illustrator, engraver, his name was R.K. Smith, and that's Robert Knox Smith. And he was a Civil War Union soldier who was a prisoner of war in Andersonville. And when he was released, he came back to New York and tried to pick up jobs as a mapmaker and architect. Some of you may know St. Andrew's Church in the Village of Brewster. His nephew was the architect on that, and he tried to get work with him, but he really didn't get success. But what he did get success was being assigned illustrations. So we have this lovely veteran who visited Brewster to do this illustration of our town before the school districts came about, and many other places in Putnam County. So if you do get a chance to see the atlas, enjoy, know that somebody really important cared enough to help Brewster create such a, such a memorable piece. So, I know the board members forget.
Mrs. Cassidy.
Thank you. I can do this report. I'm gonna just add this old last piece from the high school. So, we were lucky enough to go on a tour of the high school, and thank you so much. We tried to, you know, make the schedule, everyone scheduled, it didn't work out. So we did get gifts also on our tour from the career skills, yeah, this is for Mr. Heinz, and this one's for Mr. Rady. There's a poem, and they campaigned to them, and so it was really special. And they baked for us, so that was a moment of appreciation and thank you. And I just wanted to also show you guys. We'll take that one, but we dealt with that one, so. And thank you for everyone for, for everything, and all the great things you've said. And I think, I mean, I hope and I think that we're all on the same page, that, you know, our intention is to work together and do what's best for all the kids in this district. And, you know, hopefully, if we model that, then we're all doing that same work. And it really, it's a team effort, and I really believe that in Brewster, we have that. It's not just the board, we're one piece to it, but the thank you is really, is right back at everyone who presented tonight, so I just wanted to say that as well. So, thank you. Okay. So we'll move on now to CB Star goals. Maggie Andrelllo, Keith Allen. Welcome.
So while Maggie and Keith are coming up, our principal and vice-principal, we work together as a illustrative team to create goals, and therefore, you can see for CB Star, we flow very nicely into the four goals, districts.
Good evening, Maggie Andrelllo, Keith Allen. We are the leadership team for CB Star. CB Star is a very special place to both of us, but so is Brewster. We've both been here about sixteen years and have come to love this community as a second home for both of us. So, one of the things that Keith and I say a lot, and sort of our, one of our mottos is, it's going to be a great year. And it is, and so far, it has been. But that's the attitude that we approach our work every single day. We're very grateful for the positions that we have, for the students that we get to work with, for the faculty that we serve at CB Star. And there's just no way that it can't be a great year. Because if you come and walk through our halls, it's easy to find a lot of reasons to smile. So, throughout this presentation, we have dotted with pictures from our students. I said just a little bit ago that one of our big commitments is really to building unity. And some of our pictures are from Spirit Week, Spirit Community, Brewster Spirit is really big at CB Star. We have our Brewster Fridays, where we're trying to get everybody in green and white, some sort of Brewster gear. Friday happens to be a favorite day for us, just because we get to wear something a little bit more comfortable. But you'll see from a lot of our children here, they really enjoyed our Spirit Week, they embrace that, they, they love seeing their teachers in the different sports team gear and whatnot. So it's, Fridays are great times to come. Our first goal was to create more opportunities and programs to incorporate families into CB Star initiatives. For a long time, CB Stars really acted sort of like a breezeway. It was a school they could pass through from JFK to Wells. And we didn't have too many things that sort of made it a destination. And when Keith and I started working together, that was one of our first big wish list items. This is a, this is a great school, it's a great place to be, and we need to mark those experiences with our students. One of the first things is the Rising Star Award. Every month, teachers nominate a student from their homeroom, and they receive the Rising Star Award. We honor about thirty, thirty-five kids a month. The criteria for this, for this award is twofold. One is academic, but it's academic based on progress. Are you progressing from where you were to where you are now? You might be a high flyer, you might be a student who struggles, but are you continually pushing forward and trying your best for academic success? And the second part is just in a relentless pursuit of one's personal best, just all around. Are you continually showing that no matter what, you are moving forward, and you, day in and day out, are putting that best foot forward with everything that you do? Our next Rising Star Award ceremony is next week, we're looking forward to it, it's our second one. Students love it, it's great to see just all of the different kids that get nominated for this, and to really hear from teachers, too, what they see in their students. Some of these students or kids, they might not get a lot of recognition for a lot of things, but they're showing something day in and day out, and their teachers see it. We have a newsletter, which we do every other Friday. It tends to be a trending newsletter on SMOR, I don't check too deeply into the analytics as to why, but I like the fact that it's trending. It gets about eleven hundred views within the first twenty-four hours, so a lot of people are accessing it from CB Star. It's just a quick way to let parents know what's happened over the past two weeks. We have been partnering with our PTA, our PTA is phenomenal, and so much of what we do, and so much of what we're able to create is because of that partnership with them. We had a car wash the end of September, it was beyond successful, beyond what we thought it would be. We raised just about eight hundred dollars for it, and our children had a great, great time. The fifth grade won the opportunity, two silly strings for Allen, so that'll be coming up. It's a competitive race. We're having a parent-child Valentine's Day dance, and our big thing is, we are having a fifth grade moving up ceremony, which we have never done in CB Star. But we're marking the movement of our students out of elementary and into the, into Wells, into the middle school era, and that's gonna be at the end of June, and we are very excited to do that and to honor our children. Just some more of our Spirit Week.
Goal number two, evaluating how we can let and use data to better inform and refine building level processes, such as NTSS, DDI, in an effort to support and improve student This is some things that, you know, what we know from our process from NTSS and DDI, just to better utilize different methods for tier one and tier two to support interventions within our building. And working with all our interventionists and personnel to establish interventions for all teachers. So just making sure everybody gets the proper support, doing everything that they can and being held accountable for that. And using all the tools that we do have in our building to support students and communicate with parents on a regular basis and keep that documented. Our process, you know, how we use data to reform our teaching practices, and how we did that, present that data to teachers, and make sure that they're using it within their practice for students where they're at and where we're trying to get them to go. And just tell us about student stress, and maybe about some things that teachers wanna improve on to help strengthen students. So it informs everyone in that process. Curricular alignment across all grade levels. So we create, you can see in a different slide how we create, we're starting to create different ways that we can go across curricular and intercurricular from three to five directly, giving them time to cohort and insert new respects to approach student learning. We create that a couple different ways that we're gonna see it from other spots.
Our third goal was to create a social emotional connection for students through PBIS. PBIS at CB Star has taken on a number of different iterations. And we relaunched it this year, really with the leadership of Mr. Allen, who is our heart and soul of PBIS in our building. We have monthly building-wide PBIS themes that are introduced to our students through monthly grade level meetings with Mr. Allen. They are not very long, they're about thirty minutes, done as a grade level, theme gets introduced, and it gets reinforced and carried over with classroom teachers throughout the month. Our ticket, our All-Star tickets, our PBIS sort of reward system, we have All-Star tickets. It's hard to get one. Very hard to get one, but students are working hard to get them, and when they come for that monthly meeting, winners are drawn from a raffle, and they earn prizes. I, I had a friend with me the other day who was principal for a day, he came in and we hung out for lunch in Bayside. We've had our SRO, Deputy Iruzy, he has had junior deputies that go around with him during lunch and Bayside time. Lots of different things, not to headline at lunch, free ice cream, we've got, they love it, it's great. And it's, it's neat to get to know students just around the PBIS themes, and, but just also PBIS in general. Our health and wellness with food services, we have been so fortunate, we've partnered up with Mrs. Hancock and Mrs. Dohan, Dohan, Dohan. And we are, we'll see you in just a little bit, we're reopening up our garden, and they're helping us with that. But they're also really helping us structure what Mr. Allen was talking about before, giving our teachers a little bit more time to come together to be a part of learning community. And that's been a really great thing for us. They wanna do a lot of work with our kids around nutrition and wellness, and we think that going forward, it's gonna be a great just enhancement to our curriculum with them. We have a mentor program at CB Star, we have teachers that volunteer to be mentors for students who just need a little bit more of a connection with an adult. And our Rising Star Human Award again, which really goes hand in hand with our PBIS, we're really, really focused on supporting our students, giving them confidence, making them see themselves as just a really important part of our community. And then being a part of a community can take on many different shapes, sizes, and forms, and it's really just being about the best that you can be.
Being able just to recognize in many different ways, you know, not only that, you know, the teachers take on a part of their involvement themselves within their classrooms. So there's many different ways kids, kids can be recognized to achieve, right, so there's just not one out of that. So we're trying to reach all kids and celebrate all strengths at all the time, so just get everybody to do that.
One of my favorite pictures is the one on the left here. We get visited by dogs who are learning how to be therapy dogs, and they come in and they work in some of our classes, who help with their training. And so that's one of our little furry visitors who come in. They tend to be our most popular visitors, our children love them, we love them, we like them all the time. But that's one of, that's one of the perks of being at CB Star.
Goal number four, that we, is provide more opportunities for interdisciplinary, integrated level conversations within the building, is to solicit more timely feedback from staff to ensure better alignment within the grade levels. So, you know, we try to create that opportunity just so we're able to support, you know, things that we don't know, or things that are weird or things that we need, we need that information back to the teachers. So we always, you know, try to create opportunities for that conversation, you know, not so much structural, formal and informal, in the time of the day, depending on what the situation is. And make sure that they have the support and the tools that they need, whatever that may be, however that may look, whether we wanna celebrate it, support it, exploit it, and make sure that, you know, for giving the children the best opportunity to learn, the best chances to succeed. And this is particularly, make sure they have it daily.
One of the ways that we're doing that in conjunction with health and nutrition is offering a nutrition wellness class with our food services personnel, and giving teachers the opportunity to sign up, and then use that time for the teachers to go and meet, it could be within a grade level, it could be within a team, it could be across grade levels. But to be able to bring children together to do some learning around nutrition and wellness, and giving teachers that extra time to really do some deep work together, it's great. And it's just forty-five minutes, but it's forty-five minutes that can be used really, really well, and teachers are excited about that, and we're excited about that possibility for our children.
Also along with that is, the, you know, the grade levels, even if they are not required to be present, so we're getting a half hour from that as well, to go and work together to get things done across grade levels. So it's something more than an hour a month.
And our feedback from our teachers have been quite positive around that, we've seen a lot of different ideas come about, a lot of different partnerships starting to flourish, so it's been really rewarding for us to see, just as leaders. These are some of our children, we've got some work going on in Project Lead the Way and now happening here, more Spirit Week, this is Twin Day, everybody left to a day. We have school pictures. Picture on the left here was our fourth grade trip to the Native American Museum, museum up in Connecticut, they just did that across last week and the week before, and our students had a great time, they actually visit and walk through and are part of the Native American Village for the day, it's excellent. The middle picture here was another group of fourth graders, when they completed reading Tiger Rising, they went outside and they did some soap whittling, because that is one of the activities that the main character in Tiger Rising does. So, Mrs. Racine, fourth grade, was thinking about and said, oh, we could do that in Irish soap. And our fourth graders went out and they were whittling the picture of the tiger into a, into a bar of Irish soap. They had a great time, the designs they did were, it was absolutely out of this world, and it was great.
Jeffrey, just to let you know, the garden, big hats off to, you know, O and M Buildings and Ground, they're absolutely, those guys, they work extremely hard, and they, they pay attention to detail, they're fabulous job. Because of them and their support, and the vision that we had at CB Star, we were able to restructure our garden, it was completely handicapped and accessible for people like Jeffrey, all the way down to our path. We had raised beds for him to be able to plant and do things, we made it wide enough for him to get it between even the lower beds and everything else. So it is completely handicapped and accessible, and it's outstanding. We have been to be there today, we opened it up for the first time, and this is them. Then came out tonight, and they, today, and they were loving the beds, today, before the next layer goes on, and helping nutrition and the food services also have great support. Got all of our fall season, and we put this stuff into the ground, and student directly that we're taking care of themselves. So absolutely outstanding, again, hats off to the Building and Grounding Food Services.
This was another one of our big goals when Keith and I first started meeting last spring, and he said, what do you wanna do? I said, I wanna reopen the CB Star garden. Because ten years ago, we had that open, we had more vegetables than we knew what to do with at times, we'd like dormant for a little bit, but over the summer, with a lot of help from Buildings and Grounds like Keith was saying. from Buildings and Grounds like Keith was saying, and just a lot of people seeing our dream and encouraging us. We got it open, and this morning was our love reel moment, two classes out there, third and fourth grade. The joy on their faces was out of this world. It was absolutely wonderful to be outside there with them, they loved it. We've got tools and seeds and so many other different ideas, we really want to make this an outdoor learning lab space for kids, where they're learning, but they're not even aware that they're learning, they're just having fun. And the feed that, the feedback from them as they were leaving, thank you so much for letting us have fun, thank you so much for letting us out here. They loved it, so we're really excited about this.
This is Dohan and this is Hancock, I mean, immediately was just, uh, today for the first time because they haven't seen it. Immediately, we're not helping all this group that they're having, I'm not just plugged in with our building for, yeah, they're being like, okay, so here's where we're going to use the process, we're going to show them sustainable cooking, sustainable living, and immediately they begin to land what they're going to do, so it's a great opportunity, we're extremely thankful for the support and the good, for you guys as well, so thank you.
And this is our life, life is a total, it's all that our kids, so thank you so much, and thank you. I want to go to the garden. It's been mine, it's conscious, I'd love to see like in the whole district, or some levels, what we put that, where that can go. But thank you so much for that presentation, for this is starting, and transportation, and things, and part of it. Okay, so we now move on to, oh, I was going to say something, but that donation, I just kind of was thinking about it quietly. I think we could probably post something like if people wanted to make certain donations for, as, as that grows, the garden project grows, I'm sure people would so, so anything they could do.
Yeah.
There's definitely, absolutely.
Say thank you to Home Depot too, they gave us sufficient amount of donated product, we have pallets of soil, it's all for free, we just, we just actually literally said yes right away.
That's amazing. Okay, so move on to public remarks. Anyone out there has anything they want to say on any of the action items we have on the agenda today, you're more than welcome to come up and share this time, not, there'll be no other opportunity, forget the meeting. Can I rush up the ones? Okay, so we're going to move on now to action items. Number one is acceptance of donation, lighting the picnic for the Brewster High Performing Arts Center.
Yes, I'd like to thank Cliff Bruno from Technical Directions for this generous donation to our Performing Arts Center. Also want to recognize Andrea Righi Go and Patty Taylor for reaching out and soliciting really this donation on our behalf. The value of the equipment is a little over twenty-one thousand dollars, and donation to our Performing Arts Center.
Wow, thank you. Okay, I need a motion and a second please. Glenn and Krista, thank you. Questions or comments on this?
I would also like to thank them on behalf of the theater and all the other groups, I mean, it's going to be incredible what they're going to be able to accomplish, plus it's going to help on their budget, it's less things we have to rent, you know, the school has, so it's a win-win all around.
Okay, um, I don't know, just go, all in favor? Seven opposed, motion passes, seven zero. We now move on to action number two, approval of contract for MS4 NYC DEP provides engineering services.
Yes, this is an annual contract that allows us to report our storm water pollution prevention plan, otherwise known as a SWIP, which is a requirement of New York City DEP, and that's because we're within the wetlands.
Thank you, I need a motion and a second please. Scott and Danny, thank you. Questions or comments?
One's the question, with a new grounds of property that Glenn Friar coming in, did he have any input or is this just a standard thing that we?
This is a standard, well, it's a requirement that we fulfill this storm water pollution prevention plan. Inside Engineering on our behalf has been performing this for probably the past six years. I also want to note that their fee has remained flat for the past six years, and Glenn is familiar with inside engineering. They're actually, they're principal partners located in Paul and Reedy, former.
Any questions? Right, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion passes, seven zero. We now move on to the consent agenda. Anything to add?
Sure, I think following the fine presentation on our cross-country team, it might be worth noting the athletic appointments this evening for our winter coaches for this upcoming season. Thank you to Coach Ferraro for his efforts to secure highly qualified coaches, first two athletes, and also just a quick mention, a welcome to Ms. Mary Ann McGee, our new math innovation specialist at CB Star. So she comes to us with several years of experience.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion and a second please. Carrie and Glenn, thank you. Questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Sorry, that's a, WMS Academy, what is that?
WMS Academy.
This is some of the middle school.
Yes, so Wells Academy was a program that's been running for six, seven years at the middle school. It's a designed tier-three support for students who may need a little extra support in achieving their academic and social objectives.
I relate that, there's also an educational leadership internship on one of those?
Student teacher.
Student teacher.
No, no, of course, anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, motion passes, seven zero. We move on to action number four, right? Good, where am I? Consent agenda, no, going on remarks, we're done. Consent of, no, it's four. More than four. No.
They're all done together, we're done.
Yep, they're all done together, the consent agenda is done as a group. So we actually move on to remarks, that was quick. So now public remarks, round two, anyone have anything? Come up, state your name, and you have three minutes to.
My name is Connie Hossi, and I just would like to say that I'm always amazed at all the good stuff that comes out of these schools. And I was very happy to see Mr. Song here for once, the work that he does, that man's a miracle worker. And I have one of each of those pumpkins, and it was just amazing to see the kids, the high school kids, that I remember when they were younger and grew, and I didn't recognize them, and you know, the cross-country, the sports, it's just, our schools are just blossoming. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we now move on to email communications, I think it was a quiet two weeks, I was quiet. Yeah, nothing compared to two weeks. Move on now to board remarks, committee updates. I might, I have plenty of things to say, so I'll go first if I don't have them to say.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to comment on the annual inspection, some of those you weren't able to attend. It's my second year watching it, and Commander Wadelick, along with the boosters, Scott, I mean, it was quite an impressive, quite an impressive show. One of the things Commander Miller, who was the inspecting officer, the area four, he runs area four, one of the things he said in his speech that stood out to me, when I was speaking to Mickey Horler, kind of trying to find the timeframe for ROTC, we think it started about eighty-two or eighty-three in Brewster, it's been here forever, you know, Dean probably attest to that. He, he brought up the fact that the ROTC is, is, one of their functions is to give kids the opportunity to learn before they make their mistakes, to be part of something bigger than themselves. He said that our generation was able to make a mistake and come back for what today's generation can't. And I tell you what, that really hit home, it was, there was a lot of truth in his statement, and I think the structure of this program is commendable, Commander Wadelick has gone, he's worn two hats because of incidents that happened, and you know, I'm very happy to have been part of it. So, you know, Scott hats off, you'll be a booster, you put in tons of time with it, it really is a great program.
I'm sad that it's my son's, you know, final one, my daughter tells me she can't fit it into her schedule, she's too busy. So I mean, it is an incredible, and to see the kids, and the chance of leadership, the bonds, if there's a Roxy kid that has a free period, you don't let them, they're in the Roxy, Forestwood, they're in the Roxy, Ashwood, they're in the Roxy, anything that Commander asks of them, these kids are on board, it's incredible, you know, that you can get, the kids would wait to start, but you can see them go that other step, I mean, it's incredible to see.
Anyone else?
I'll just say, for the Brewster Ed Foundation, the Corvette Raffle is November ninth, so really would appreciate it if everybody who was, who hasn't had the, taken the opportunity yet to buy a raffle ticket, it's one of our biggest fundraisers for the year, B E F dot org, just log on there, a hundred dollars a ticket, but we don't, we don't sell that many, so you have the opportunity to win a car, take cash payout, and like I said, it's a great fundraiser, the B E F does great things to really fund some of the smaller needs for the classrooms, and so it's a great opportunity for everybody to support that work that's going on.
Just a couple of things, and then I have a question I want to bring up, should I pull the question?
Yeah.
High school put on the drug and had us a brain presentation, and it was another one of those presentations that was scary, and the information they gave out, and the ease of addiction, and you know, here's meth, this is the drug, and then the guy went on to say, and here's mine. I mean, it's just amazing, the comparison between some of these things, but I was happy to see that the board did record it, it is on the school's website, so if anybody has not seen it, it's definitely something that you should look at. I thank the PTA, they put on a meet and greet with the superintendent, slightly delayed because of the rain, it was nice to see it was a community and the PTA put together to come out and meet the superintendent. There's a couple benefits coming up, this weekend the baseball team is putting on an Applebee's pancake breakfast on Saturday from eight to ten, who's helped support the baseball group. One of our Eagle Scouts was in here previously, did the project with the middle school, Nikki Haywood, he is putting on his pasta dinner on the third, I guess it's Sunday, it's from, I want to say four to seven over at the VFW, would help raise funds for his Eagle Scout project. And I want to thank the career skills class for their, you know, incredible gift, it was very nice to receive.
Your question?
Question on bus arm cameras, want me to pull that on slide, do you want to hear?
No, you can pass that.
I wanted to see if maybe over the next meeting or so, we could start a discussion about possibly authorizing the use of this device. Right now I see it's currently in a number of counties, I think it's DeBroom County, Orange County is currently working on it, Nassau and Suffolk are currently putting on it. While the governor signed the bill, that just authorizes districts to use it, doesn't give you anything else. So all the local districts have to still put their own implementation forward, and of course fund it, I assume it's a very expensive process. I reached out to the Putnam County Traffic Bureau, which was here last week, and they just said in their opinion, it's something everyone should do, but they are also know that there's a great cost involved, and a lot of technical work related to it, because while we might have one system on our buses, Carmel might have another, Maybach might have another, so it's not like you just, one size fits all. And she was going to reach out to her contacts in Albany and other offices, see if there's any talk of funding or anything of that type. What I would like to do, with the board's permission, is to start reaching out to our local representatives and our Putnam County representatives to start a discussion, if this is something that possibly we can implement throughout the county, and then I hate to say have the county pull up, because it seems there needs to be an ownership to the camera system. And if the Putnam County can fund it and set it up in the schools and take ownership piece, while it takes it off of our plate, we still get the benefit of it, plus the tickets start at two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and there's a possible cost share between the municipality which holds it and possibly the school districts. So the concept being, this might be something that could fund itself. And then at the, at the worst thing is, people stop passing school buses. We saw just within the last year, one of our school bus drivers stopped a kid from getting run over, because the kid was just walking out the door, and the person behind didn't pay any attention, didn't know what was going on, and drove right past. And they weren't able, they wrote down all the information, but they couldn't do anything about it. I mean, maybe you can warn them if you get the information, but now with the camera takes a picture of the car and the license plate, it's very detailed, and the writing of the law, well, I hate to say, it's not a moving violation, it's not an insurance event, they'll be notified, and there's some teeth in there that if there's enough notifications, then the state has the ability to take possibly their license away, do something to take this person off the road. Like I said, I've done some preliminary talks with a couple of the county representatives, but I just wanted to see how the board felt on that, and if it's something we could possibly work towards.
Mr. Seaman, I think you can bring me up, it's something that Mr. Carl says already started to look into, and he will continue to look into that. Thank you. Thank you.
I would just add that we had the opportunity to tour through Brewster High School, and you guys went to J O K, I wasn't, I went to J O K. And it really, you know, it's the second time I've done it, and it's really such a great experience. I wish all, everyone had the opportunity to do it, and not just board members, but you really, you just get such a great view of the school. We saw, you know, one of our new science teachers at the high school, we saw Mr. Honey's math construction class, we saw, we went into the robotics class, and we went into the career skills room, which is really just, just a fantastic experience. I mean, the teachers and the aides in that room, what they're accomplishing is just, just amazing, and it was really an honor to be there and to see it, and to see the other classes, and so I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity for us to do that, and I wish that it was something that everyone could do, because there's a lot of great things to do.
I also want to thank board for those reasons I can make, because I know you're busy, you have jobs, you have messages, and so I want to thank those of you that were able to join us. Monday, we have another visit coming up, I'll put it in the meeting updates, but thank you, it was great to come.
I just added the J K news as well, but same thing, I mean, and it's funny how the kids are just, they're just used to people kind of walking in and out and not fazed and skip a beat and keep doing what they're doing. But just how well behaved, and how, you know, focused, and the kids are really involved, you know, you'd think like if they really weren't learning or interested, they'd be distracted by who wants to walk, who's walking by, but they were all very engaged, and it was great to see, you know, again, and they were doing great things, so thank you. And thank you for the principals for taking time out of your day to, to endure us, to answer questions, we appreciate it, so thank you. Okay, so I'll try to make it quick, sorry, just to, since you took the time to, or you guys, since you took the time to tell me how to vote, I'll tell you how some things went. Again, a few hours, spare you all that, but the first one, I'll just, everything went pretty much there, there were a bunch that they had to do a head panel, so it was three-hundred people, they weren't short, just raising their paddles, so it was very clear, they go through the counter room. One thing I want to say though, that last year, being my, you know, first year as president and kind of, kind of get a hold of a lot of different things, I was, I had a big learning curve, but this year I was really able to take in what other school boards do with this work, and they really do designate significant time, because this is really our effort. So while we can go talk to legislators and go to Albany, these are our lobbyists, so we are literally telling them, this is what our educational needs are, these are, whatever the issues are, go fight for this, and they have a big presence because they're representing over seven hundred more school districts, and it's, they have a lot of weight to that. And so I would just recommend for us for next year to just take, do a work session on this and really go through them, because many districts really did get up there for each one and argue why they were for or against, to sway the room perhaps, you know, with the arguments and why something should be or not, and then, you know, it's just more work for us, but not much. And the other thing that was also great was to see, so these resolutions come from school districts, there would be none without school districts. So if there is something, we have a whole year to think about it. So if there is something, we have a whole year to think about it. If there's something that you guys think throughout the year that hits us that we really feel that needs to be fought for and like the Unfunded Manny thing, that's always, there's some version of that every year. But anything, we can draft it or we can put forward for the whole state to vote on and for them to add it to the floor. The one, well specifically to the one that we had had our debate on, which was the.
SRO.
Yeah, so raising the, the, the whole thing. They, it failed by, I mean, a handful of people, it was a small number. So first they had to vote to bring it in to the floor, which they did and people did want to discuss it. But then it ultimately failed by, I mean, it was such a small number. So there was also very lengthy discussion in, in that room about that as well. They went back and forth for various reasons and there were some people like, you know, who are officers on their boards and who are arguing for reasons and for the same things that we brought up. But ultimately, like I said, it failed by just a very small margin. So that just means that for this year, it won't be focused. Someone could bring it up again. We could bring it up again for next year. We voted on again and it might have a bigger need. Everything else that we discussed, I think went in the direction that we had agreed to. I'm going to spare you all the details and conversations, because I think maybe for next year, what we can do is, like I said, maybe have a work session before and after and then go through it so we can really know where we stand on everything. So yeah, at least I wanted to mention that one, because I know that was our big discussion here. And then just to comment on a few of the seminars, it's interesting that they were talking about the garden, because one of the seminars I went into, the sessions, it's a district upstate, so they're very much surrounded by farm, farmers, farming land. And they talked about the grants. And yes, you can use a Voces like we have, but they were so adamant about hiring your own grant writer, because they said they are literally, their job is just you. And the few thousand that it costs the district to get to pay that grant writer, the hundreds of thousands of dollars they can actually get for you is worth it. Because they, I mean, they were going through and we had, oh, we got that grant, we got this grant. And it was insane. The money is there, but you need a dedicated person to fund it for your needs. And they know how to tailor it and word it and do all that and they're focused. So I think it's something we should consider for us to have in this district. You know, again, just in many different sessions, hearing how grant after grant and have that person just dedicate, you know, they can analyze the needs of your district and they'll know where to go find that stuff and the money is out there. So I'd like for us to consider that.
I think southeast, now southeast, just a tiny vision.
Okay, yeah, it, it makes a difference, it makes a huge difference. But this one in particular was about, it was farm to school. And so they started, they had a three-year program, they're year three now and they're going to continue it. But again, through grants, they were able to get machinery and different things and, and start also working with local farms. They're like, you know, they're like, why are we getting apples from California when we have a farm up the road that grows apples? And they were able to bring farmers to schools and the kids can identify with them and they feel more invested in, in that work and that exchange. And the, with the pricing and all that, it's, it was more profitable that way, you know, anyway, because they're right there. We also had it. So I was very interested in how they did that, because again, it was another cost-saving measure, but they were also working with people in the community and we also have plenty of people. Their year three was going to be focusing on the eight, but that was another discussion. But something that I thought was interesting, I asked my daughter and she said coffee was winning, but they brought in, we're not, smoothies. They did, they did contests with kids, which, which smoothies do you like? And kids were allowed to walk around school with their smoothies, but they were getting their fruits and vegetables in a completely different way throughout the day and were not really able to get these wonders. And it was actually surprisingly like came twelve, everything they were doing. But the way they started it, like with everything, is with community involvement and committees and discussion and that kind of stuff. But that was really interesting. And the other thing is, and I'm sure Michelle you know this, but there was, were quite a few sessions on mental health in schools and every variation of that. And so I know with our, figuring out how we're going to have our committee meeting and all that. But the assistant commissioner, and I wrote it down, but somewhere in Austin, I don't know. Assistant Commissioner Office of Student Support Services was actually doing one of the presentations specifically on this topic and what, you know, the board's responsibility isn't it? So I needed to go, because I really need clarity for me, for us therefore. And it really is for us to help communicate the work and to, you know, kind of be the link and get the support. Because the, the whole intention is for mental health, and there's a shift in thinking here, that, you know, we've gone from reading and writing and everybody's Spanish to like, so I was reading at the time, like the last hundred years. But, you know, math and science and for, for mental health to be one of those, just like that, lined up right there with math and integrated into curriculum and everything else. And that was when Commissioner was presenting, that was part of like the presentation, that it, the intention is for it to be just kind of what we do. And, and yes, and for the community to be a support in that. And therefore being able to communicate back to the board, here are the needs of this district, here's what we're doing, here's what's going. We can use the, the support in this area to make it really, you know, for every child. There was some discussion brief on, not as detailed perhaps as an IEP, but if it really are time and enough to help for every kid in the school, in the entire district, you know, what does that look like and how are you tracking it and how, will students be held accountable for that, that whole picture? So there was a lot in there and so I know that we'd already undertaken that work and it's so much, so I'm grateful. So of course, when we do get that community together, whatever we can do to help support that work, you know, we're here for it. But the other thing was, she put the link with my Soichikawa, you already know, but there were so many resources, it was insane. Like any question you had or a district might have, and there are many districts that are just starting this process, so it really was kind of intended for them, but.
If I can just jump in, many of the workshops that I attended up there too, I was happy to email, you know, I could text Victor or I could text Michelle. Are we doing this? We're doing this, we're doing this. So I was happy to. Really, really, really. That Brewster is ahead of game in so many ways and there's so many things that you guys are already doing here. So great ideas that were, you know, other things for us to strive for, but I just was very, very happy to know that many of the programs that were talked about, whether it was equity or mental health, we are already, you are already have going here, but so that was very reassuring.
I'm going to echo that too, because even from a board perspective, I went as well to like, okay, what else can we do? Am I missing something or are we not doing something? I'm like, oh, we've got that, we're doing that. And so it's nice to know that we're like trapped with a lot of things and we're going in that direction. And then just the last thing I'll comment on, I mean, there was, you know, it's three days of seminars, so I'm not going to go all there. But the other one was, I was, I was very curious. So I went to, there was a presentation on, I forget what the title, it wasn't exactly, but Shannon Lomier is a sixth-generation Jefferson descendant. Wait, that's it. And I got that right. And he was one of the main speakers and it was just a great presentation. And he talked a lot about his, his life story, the oral history that was passed down. And his mom actually being an educator, who, for, for those who may not know, he's a direct descendant, you know, from, from slaves that were owned by Jefferson. And his mother and because of that exchange, his mother, they were talking a lot about, you know, who passed as what and his mom looked white and he, you know, looks black. And so there was a lot of important, a lot of important information in this presentation, as well as questions that came after. And just his mom being a teacher and the struggles and the conversations and him being proud of his heritage in a very interesting way. Because on one hand, you know, that was one of the things that came up, like why would he, then why wouldn't he be? So it was really interesting. He also wrote a book, which I purchased, I'll give it to the district, he'll dedicate it to the district. And there's a lot of history in there from both sides, because they have family reunions and it was just very interesting. And just him talking about, you know, how important education is and how important it is to have difficult conversations all the time. So when that book comes out, I'll make sure I pass it on.
I'm going to add just one last thing. I think one of the biggest themes of the convention was that these are all of our children. We need to create opportunities for every child. So that's really critical.
If there was anything else, we've covered most of it.
Yeah, it seems we were, anything I'm into, there was something about mental health, we're doing this, we're here. Behavior and the student leadership in the elementary schools, we're doing this. School security, we were so far away and above, above most people. When I'm telling people that we had SROs in all our schools, they don't. What do you, it was all my little people with all the money? I'm like, no, we're country people like you. No matter where we looked, it was there. And I, I saw some incredible stuff that I'll just, I don't know, I'll pass that on. I mean, they had a, what was it? Z space, which I think we have something similar to Microsoft, you know, that VR simulation. But this one with more glasses and the kids were dissecting hearts, going through chains of genes and chemistry. And it's all visual and they have programs that come with the systems. Yes, they are a tad expensive, but maybe there's a way to somehow work this in. But through these programs, they were able to offer anatomy and physiology, these things that we currently don't have. And maybe if we look towards expanding our science programs, this could be a component. But it's also, you also use it in an elementary school. It's accessible to all the districts, it's portable, so it can be moved back and forth. And the amount of programs, even simple, it's like, once the kids do all the work, they're here in 3D making pizza. That seemed to be the big one at the school. And everybody went out of their way to say, if you want to come and see, come on. Every district was very forthcoming saying, please come see what we're doing. I mean, they're so proud of what they've accomplished and what the kids do and they want to share. So no matter what topic it was, there's somebody going, come on, we'll help you, we'll, we'll let you come and look at it. I mean, it was, it was great to see.
I don't know, with the deadlines for next year, if we missed them or if they're still open. But if there's any opportunity for us to, to feature anything that Brewster's doing, because next year's in New York City. Absolutely. So if anything comes to mind that we want to show the rest of the state or we want us to present on. You know.
Your father's too.
I just have to say it. Okay. Anyone else? Anything? Yeah, okay. What do we have next, upcoming meetings? What do you mean, what's our next meetings in?
November twelve.
November twelve.
November twelve, okay. And we actually, dates were discussed earlier, so they were, have a record despite. Sports fall, football, sports right thousand six, I think they're there. Yeah, so dates.
I think it's a coral thing on the table.
And any other remarks from the public or maybe you able to board and superintendent at the O E M Brewster Schools dot org? I don't think we have executive session following. Just made a motion to adjourn. Glenn, insisted, thank you. All is in favor? Motion passes, seven zero.